Good evening. I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by Amendment of Silence. Please be seated. All right, at this time, we will open the floor for public and employee comment. Please state your name, address, and we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. All right, first, we have Kathy Romaine.
Hello, my name is Kathy Romaine. My address is 6954 Benton Court. Most of you probably remember me from Thursday. But today was the first day of school. And I hope that you guys had a chance to spend a few minutes in any of the schools to know that the decision you made for optional masks for all grades essentially was beneficial for everyone. This afternoon, I got the news that Tolliver resigned, which is great news. Now, a few more of you need to follow her and her leads. It was very clear that this past Thursday that you were making decisions for our entire county off your personal feelings of COVID. But if you, but like Colin stated, you work for us. And it's extremely clear that if you spent 15 minutes in any King George County school, over 75% in all the schools were not masked. I'm not here because it's almost inevitable that you guys will try to close schools down again, whether there's a bill already out there or a law that says y'all won't. But let, um, but I want to remind you that many counties last year figured it out to stay open for five full days. My stepson goes to Hanover County last year. This year, he'll go again. They don't start till after September. But last year, which they're only like 54.7 miles away from us, and they were open five days last year. Like, they started on time, five days. If there's a COVID issue in school, they got an email. You guys couldn't manage to open the school at all. Well, part-time, which then leads me to the suicide rate for the kids under the age of 18, which has soared and its unspeakable numbers. Yet, the transmission rate for COVID among kids is still very low. If you do plan on shutting schools down again, please be able to provide and be ready to provide school vouchers for parents who still wish to send their kids in person. And remember that you guys do work for us, and one by one, your seats will be replaced.
Thank you, Ms. Romaine. Next, Ricky Moore.
My name is Ricky Moore, and I live on, at 9159 Lambs Creek Church Road. Good evening to the board and Dr. Benson. I'm here to request you to correct your error in passing the motion to make masks optional and include an opt-out provision in violation of Senate Bill 1303. It passed the House of Delegates, 88 to 9. The State Senate, 36 to 3, was signed March 30th by the governor and went into effect on July 1st, 2021. It directs you, using the word "shall," to provide in-person instruction for at least the minimum number of required instructional hours. And it directs you to implement and maintain, to the maximum extent, practicable CDC guidance. The relevant portion reads: Each school board shall offer in-person instruction to each student enrolled in the local school division in a public elementary and secondary school for at least the minimum number of required instructional hours and each student enrolled in the local school division in a public school-based early childhood care and education program for the entirety of instructional time provided pursuant to such program. For the purposes of this act, each school board shall, one, adopt, implement, and when appropriate, update specific parameters for the provision of in-person instruction; and, two, provide such in-person instruction in a manner in which it adheres to the maximum extent practicable to any currently applicable mitigation strategies for early childhood care and education programs and elementary and secondary schools to reduce the transmission of COVID-19 that have been provided by the federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. These are not my words. These are the words of the law. Failure to follow your directive under the law brings potential liability to the school division, the school board, and the county. This liability could also include personal liability, as your unlawful actions could be the basis of overcoming qualified immunity. Iner X of the law is not a valid defense. To me, the text of the law seems quite clear, but it's not your job nor my job to argue the constitutionality or applicability of the law. It's to follow the law, and at this point, you're not. And the most prudent move is to implement a mask mandate, speak to council about the potential impacts, and then determine what exceptions may be allowable unless the county or potentially the members of the board individually claim liability and get sued for damages. It may be in the board's best interest to have a board attorney or the county attorney to discuss matters like these before improvising potentially problematic policies at a meeting. There have been, there was exactly one public event at the high school where COVID-tracking case letters had to be sent out. How many elementary school students were unmasked at this event? And all we can start incubating to spread the virus to other people in the community today. Thank you for your time, and I'll be heading home to protect my family and the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Carrie Latalati Hall.
Hello, my name is Carrie Latalati Hall. I live at 5792 Coakley Drive, King George, Virginia. I have two daughters that attend Sealston Elementary School. And I'm a huge advocate for public education everywhere in our country, especially in our county. I think we can all agree that we all want our kids to stay in school and continue to receive in-person schooling moving forward. I think that keeping our children healthy and without COVID-like symptoms is the most optimal way to do this, same with our teachers. Why are we not being more cautious when it comes to following all of the mitigations that the CDC is recommending? I urge you to rethink the mistake you made this past Thursday. I, I understand that everyone who voted did so with the best of their intentions. I, I truly believe that each one of you is acting with the best of intentions to protect our kids and what you think they need. But I do think you need to rethink this issue and implement a universal masking policy for all King George County schools as recommended by the CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, and the Virginia Department of Health. At a bare minimum, universal masking should be required within elementary schools regardless of vaccination status per the latest CDC recommendation due to the Delta variant. Universal masking seemed to work well in our schools this past spring. That's what my husband and I were expecting, along with as many other mitigations that were used last spring when we did not sign our kids up for Virtual Virginia this fall. I just don't understand what the issue is now when it comes to trying to keep down transmission of an even more contagious variant. I've heard things like, well, why can't, why can't you or your kids just wear a mask? Masks don't work. Well, I really urge you to think about these things for these people that share this anecdotal evidence in our community. Was everyone around you also wearing a mask, i.e., was universal masking in place? Were you and others around you wearing face masks correctly, as detailed by the CDC? This includes wearing a face mask that fits each person correctly. Were face masks being worn, that were being worn regularly cleaned? If the answer to all the above questions was yes, that doesn't prove face masks don't work. It just proves that more mitigations need to be in place in addition to face masks. And I'll send the rest of my comments to you guys in an email.
Thank you, Ms. Latalati Hall. Dawn Shelton.
Dawn Shelton, 9430 Ashman Court. First of all, thank you all you ladies and gentlemen for giving your time to serve our county. As a point to be made, you serve the people of King George. And I'll repeat what I said last week. Dr. Fuji and the CDC said in March of 2020, only the N95 mask will protect you. These other masks does not. Of course, in recent times, we can't trust what the doctor says. We can't say trust CDC because they lie to us. You do work for the people of the county. We voted December 19 to be a sanctuary city, voted guns and stuff, because we didn't want to be dictated to by the state government. And that's what the state government have become, a communist government dictated to us. The mask does not work. The people of this county sped up. You represent the people, and you give the parents the right to choose last week, and I think that's honorable. Again, thank you for all the hard work you do for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Albert Wright.
Yes, good evening. I want to say thank you to the parents, especially to the officers out here, the board members. What a thankless job, huh? Also, Mr. Collins, I was here last Thursday. I hear you're a retired officer. That's off to you. Thank you for serving the public. I'm here to see if you guys can mandate the mask. I don't know the numbers. I am going to do my best to summarize what I can. Last week, I was watching the news, CNN, Fox, doesn't matter. Around 400 children died since the pandemic started. I don't know what the percentage is, but one reporter said, well, that's only 400 out of, let's say, 20,000. The other reporter says, okay, but children are not supposed to die. I don't know if masks work. I don't know anything about N95s, whatever. I know it doesn't hurt, and I know all of our jobs is to protect our children. You do not work for me. I do not sign your paychecks. You are here, I believe, to help our children. Doesn't matter what the parents say. We want to do what's best for the children. I trust that you guys will do what you can, whether you put your personal beliefs to the side, you'll do your best to protect our children. Want to leave by saying this. Again, I'm not good with numbers, but since this pandemic started, I've lost two family members to COVID. I don't know the percentage, but I do know the names. Linda Larry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Vivian Wright.
Hello, my name is Vivian Wright. I live on 5368 Caledon Road, King George, Virginia. And I am a rising ninth grader, and I, I want to speak on the subject of the mask mandate. My dad was just speaking just before me. And I, I felt the need to speak because it is me and my siblings just, you guys are deciding our safety. And I, I have a mom who works as a nurse. She goes into the hospital multiple times a week, and this virus is pretty terrifying. And I can't pretend it's not real. I'm fully vaccinated. I thought it was over before the Delta variant, and then the Delta variant came. And it feels kind of like it's starting over. And my siblings are too young to be vaccinated, so I can't go to King George High School this year because they are not mandating masks. I can't put my family in danger like that. And I hear people saying that masks are a violation of their rights, but I don't see it like that. It's just kind of a trusting each other thing. It's, I help you if you help me. You have to depend on someone else, and that's why this pandemic's so hard. We all have to pull our weight. Like, we all have to pay taxes. It's not an infringement of our rights. It's the help, it's us helping the greater good, making our country a better place. So we just have to depend on each other to make this pandemic go away. We, we can't just pretend it's not real. We just have to do the things we can, like, we can't control where this goes. So I just really hope you'll consider, because even if I don't go to King George High School, I want you to protect the people who are there, the people I don't know who are there, my friends who are probably still going there. There are people I know who are in serious danger. I went to the open house. Someone had COVID there. I don't know who it is, but we just can't risk this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Vivian. Mr. Vance, do we have comments online?
Hi, my name is Susan Park. I'm at 10064 Francis Folsom Drive. I'm asking that you require face masks indoors for the elementary schools with no waivers permitted. Allowing parents to submit waivers essentially makes masks optional. However, given that masks are now optional in King George schools, I have the following questions. At what point will the board make masks a requirement? What are the numbers of cases, hospitalizations, or deaths that will trigger mandatory masking, if any? Similarly, what are the numbers that will cause a return to virtual school? Because COVID rates and area hospitalizations will certainly rise in our area, given the high transmissibility of the Delta variant, the lack of masks, and the inability to physically distance. Just today, Mary Washington Hospital went backward in limiting visitors to the hospital. On July 1st, there were 281 people hospitalized in Virginia for COVID. Today, there are 785. The numbers are going the wrong way. We know that virtual school is highly likely, probably within weeks. What are teachers and administrators currently doing to plan and prepare? Because people who are in close contact with COVID-positive cases must quarantine for 14 days, what are your plans for students or teachers to continue learning and teaching while in quarantine? When schools shut down in March of 2020, our schools were caught by surprise, and the negative impact on our children's education was enormous. We can't let this happen again. How does the optional mask policy fit with SB 1303, which states that Virginia schools must abide by CDC COVID mitigation guidelines, including masks? Dr. Benson brought this up at the last school board meeting and referred to the memo sent out by State Superintendent Dr. Lane, which states: "School divisions should consult local council to ensure mitigation measures are in compliance with the law." Has the school board consulted an attorney to ensure that our schools are in compliance? If they are not in compliance, what are the plans to move us into compliance with the law? As I'm sure we'll all agree, we cannot pick and choose which laws to follow. I don't think the board has fully considered the ramifications of allowing students to go unmasked in our schools. King George schools are not following two of the CDC strategies, which include physical distancing and masks, so our students' risk of infection is greatly increased. Our children will certainly catch this virus and pass it on to their family members and the larger community. The economic impact due to misswork, doctors and hospital bills, and the possible closures of local businesses due to staff being sent home to quarantine will be immense. So I urge you to rethink your decision to allow waivers and make masks a requirement. We know masks are effective.
Thank you, Ms. Park. All right, Mr. Vance, that it online. Okay. All right, so next, we have changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Madam Chair, I'd like to change, make a change to the agenda pursuant to Code Section 24228. When a vacancy arises in the school board, the school board has 15 days to have a writ to the Circuit Court for a special election. It is a requirement by law. And then 24-226 states that the school board can appoint within 45 days member to fulfill the vacant position.
Mr. Collins, what's the change you want to make to the agenda?
Change is to discuss the vacant position and to make sure that we set a special meeting and we are in compliance with 24228 on the 15-day writ.
Okay.
So to discuss the vacancy on the school board.
And the compliance.
Do we have a vacancy and compliance on the school board? Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman, aye. Motion carries. We'll add that about to the end of our discussion items. All right, any other changes?
Yes, I have one. I'd like to discuss the data to be used to utilize for recommendation of changes to our current policy.
Yeah, as discussed last week. Do we have a second?
Yeah. To discuss data to be utilized for recommendation of change to our current policy.
Current policy on what?
Anything related to the pandemic.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman, aye. Motion carries. We'll add that as a third discussion item this evening. All right. The first was to discuss the vacancy on the school board. The health metrics, that would be, yeah.
Policy manual updates.
The first discussion item is our policy manuals. I just, the third. Okay, all right. So next this evening, we'll have two presentations. So first, we have Ms. Marjorie Churchborne and our Heart Hero Award Program.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so proud and happy to be here with you all. It is such a joy to join you whenever I can. My name is Marjorie Churchborne, and I'm your heart partner at American Heart Association. And King George County schools have been one of the most supportive school districts for helping us promote heart health and wellness at American Heart Association for so many years, and I thank you all for that. This past year was no exception. It would have been an easy year for you all to say, we just can't include, we just can't include American Heart Association in our schools this year, but none of you all said that. You still recognize the importance of it. And last year was so challenging for so many reasons, for so many of you, for so many of our families, and you still kept your focus, and you remembered heart disease as our number-one cause of death. And this past year, particularly through the pandemic, we had so many people that, unfortunately, they fell backwards in their heart-healthy habits. We stayed home. We weren't active. And unfortunately, the youth vaping epidemic has really grown with our kids being home and just not learning, not being in front of others to really see what's, you know, what's, what's going on and their teachers being in front of them. So I thank you all for what you do. I thank you for leading by example. Dr. Benson, I brought something special for you this year. So in appreciation for leading by example and taking our superintendent challenge, we know that is the secret to success when it comes to engaging more students in their own health and wellness. You showed them that kindness is cool. So I thank you for your partnership. We're looking forward to it again this year. We have a very special part of it called Finn's Mission, and a lot of you are familiar with Finn. I know Dr. Benson is, he, he and his family live in Virginia, and they've even come to a few of our meetings with me and met a lot of our administrators. Finn is a very special little boy born, born with heart defects, and American Heart Association named an entire portion of our program after him. It is called Finn's Mission. And through taking it, we will learn warning signs of heart attack and stroke. We will learn about the dangers of vaping, and we will learn hands-only CPR, and we will learn how we can be kind to our hearts and to others. Dr. Benson, thank you for always leading by example. Thank you for being one of our superintendent heart heroes. And I brought this special award for you, just as a small token of our great appreciation. So thank you, sir. And I realize we probably distanced things.
Thank you, Ms. Churchborne. All right. All right, and next, we have Ms. Amanda Talbert to talk about a GEICO backpack donation.
Good evening to the King George County School Board and members of the community. My name is Amanda Talbert. I'm the Public Affairs Coordinator for GEICO for the Fredericksburg Regional Office. And the GEICO and I are delighted to be here this evening and represent all of the local associates of GEICO. We asked the associates, although it's been a tough 18 months or so, and we've had to do a lot of different things in our world of work, we asked our associates to unify around the country and prepare to donate school supplies for associates in need, wherever they may be, but especially closest to our offices. Our campaign is called the "I Am Ready" campaign because we wanted to make sure that students were prepared in lots of different ways, but particularly with some of their basic supplies to get back to school. Whatever that learning platform might be, we wanted to make sure to be a part of helping with that. So not only do we represent very proudly the associates who hail from King George County, but from all around the region, our associates came together, and we have 50 backpacks for any of your students who you find might be in need of some additional support. And very excited to be joined by a couple of partners in the community that I just want to give a shout out to. Nick Miner, your Economic Development and Tourism Director here in King George, as well as Davy Ferron, who is the Executive Director at the Rappanik Area Office on Youth. They, we could not have gotten all of this done and be with you this evening without them. They were essential partners in the community, and I was very proud that Nick took on my challenge. Where's Nick? Oh, there he is. He took on my challenge, and he fulfilled another 50 backpacks. So we have 100 backpacks for the students of King George County that are very excited to present today. Okay, so I think your photographer wants to get a few more pictures. So I'll bring the GEICO forward. Is that okay? Great. Nick wants us? Oh, no, I don't have to. You sure?
Can you see out of that?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's Mrs. GEICO, too. Thank you. Thank you. We lost Rob.
Thank you all for coming. To Nick.
So, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. So I just wanted to say that our match is from the King George County Economic Development Authority. And when GEICO reached out to my department for assistance, I posed this to Economic Development Authority, and they unanimously agreed to match that donation. So if you see your EDA members, please thank them because they truly believe in investing in the children of this county. And we hope that this donation sees some rewards over a long period of time because the true ROI is investing in our children. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So, okay, so next up, we have our consent agenda. This evening, we have, for consideration, minutes from the July 26, 2021 regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
Move that we approve the minutes from the July 26, 2021 regular meeting as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair of it's aye. Motion carries. Next, we have our action items. We have a number of policy manual updates that were reviewed at our last regular meeting. Do we have a motion to accept the policy manual updates as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the action items as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair of it's aye. Motion carries. Next, we have our discussion items. So we have a number of policy manual updates. First, we have policy BBA, School Board Powers and Duties. Policy BBBA, Qualifications of School Board Members. Policy BDDC, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination. Policy DIA, Reporting Per-Pupil Costs. Policy DJF, Purchasing Procedures. Policy GBG, Staff Participation in Political Activities. Policy GBL, Personnel Records. Policy GCBC, Staff Benefits. Policy IICV/IIICC, Community Resource Persons/School Volunteers. All right, I suppose without any discussion, I expect that we will see those return for action at our next regular meeting. All right. So next, we have our new discussion item. So the vacancy of, our, the, our new vacancy of the school board. Mr. Collins, would you like to kick that up off since you added it to the agenda?
So I'd like to make a motion for Dr. Benson to obtain counsel and file with the Circuit Court the proper writ as required by law.
So isn't the, isn't the first option for a vacancy for the remaining members to appoint a voter?
So.
The election district within 45 days?
So the 24-228 is the first thing that you have to do, is you have to notify the Circuit Court for a special election because of the time amount of the two years available. But then, we have to do that within 15 days of those showers. And then, then we have 45 days to agree upon somebody to fill the vacant position. Or if we don't agree, then the Circuit Court judge will appoint the person. So we need to first make sure that we're in compliance with the law to get that writ. And I don't think that anybody up here has the skill to do a writ. That's why I would request that Dr. Benson take legal counsel in that motion to file that within the prescribed time.
So since the vacancy is not up for election until 2024, we will actually be requesting that there be a special election for 2023 to fill that position. And we have to go through that court process in order to do that, and we need legal counsel. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
It needs to be filed.
Needs to be filed within 15 days.
Not only do you need to get counsel, which I would imagine you would use the same counsel you used in the past, but they also have to file a writ. So day one is already gone. So we have 14 days left.
Dr. Benson, is that something that our counsel, you have information?
I do have copies. Ms. Bushrod did provide me the copies of the two state laws that Mr. Collins had referenced. If it's of any helps you, I'll pass those down. I'm happy to contact counsel on behalf of the board and do anything prudent to move the process along. And certainly, I would come back to Ms. Gonzalez as chair to advise if a special meeting is necessary to hear from counsel or the board as a whole to initiate directions.
Just, just follow up. I contacted the registrar, who contacted the State Board of Elections' legal counsel. And of course, they can advise, but she just said that that's what we need to do.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second? So since this is something that, I mean, sure, I'll second it, but I'm just thinking that since it's something that has to be done, I mean, we have to follow this in order to move forward. Does it need a motion?
Yes. So, so you have to, in order for.
Because we're, we're asking.
We want to make sure that we're all on board, and then we give them directions to the superintendent to make sure that gets done.
Okay.
But if we don't do it, then we'll be in violation of law.
Right.
Could cause a lot of problems.
So I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair of it's aye. Motion carries. All right.
One more on that discussion item. So the 45 days. So how is it going to be handled? Is it going to be an application process?
I suppose we need to discuss that. I don't have my answer today.
I would suggest that we, through Dr. Benson, perhaps open up the information to the public in terms of the requirements for the position.
So I don't mean to interrupt, but I would just caution Dr. Benson to get into something to do with the board in an elective thing.
This is just informing the public what, what we are doing.
I know, but still, I, I, that's my, I'm just cautioning that.
So couldn't we just ask legal counsel what the recommendation is? Maybe it's posting something on our website with that information, and then all of that information via email or something would come to the chair, and then she would disseminate there. So that we have one point of contact. And then I guess we would have to set up some type of work session in order to review. And then if I don't, are there any limitations to review?
Yeah, they had to be.
Is this like hiring somebody?
They're like, they gotta be in the Jameson Road District. They have to be an eligible voter. They have to, you know, all the stuff that we had to be.
Correct.
And then you, of course, you know, you want them to maybe give us a little resume of their summary of their, because it is four of us that are, you know, trying to agree upon this.
So I suppose I would agree that it would be maybe not appropriate to ask Dr. Benson to put that, that out. But I think perhaps that would be more appropriate coming from the board. Would it make sense for, I suppose, I only say myself as chair, but for us to reach out as a board to gain that counsel from, I suppose, the county attorney, as well as our registrar and gain?
Only thing, if you're going to go with counsel, you would go with outside counsel because the county counsel, I've talked to them, and they said, "We don't represent you."
Yeah, I've heard that as well.
So, so I would say that we should get our own. If that's what you want to do for, just to fill the position, I think it's pretty simple that we just get who they are and make qualified. We make a decision, there's a company that has paperwork for them. If they're not qualified, then we wouldn't be able to appoint them.
I would think that perhaps the registrar might be the appropriate person to inform the public of what's going on and the requirements for the position and how one goes about the next step.
The registrar doesn't have anything to do with the requirements for the position, other than the required by law. You have to be, you know, 18 years old. Those simple voter requirements for a elected. But I don't think that, I don't think that you're going to get her to do that. I'm just, I don't think it's her position to do that. I think it's our position to do that. So you can maybe take out an ad in the freelance star.
I don't care who does it, honestly. I think the, the public needs to be informed about
Yes.
the availability.
Yes.
So when Dr. Benson asks
On Facebook.
counsel to file the paperwork, why don't we also ask him if he could ask them if they have any guidance on what the procedures we need to adhere by? And then possibly discuss it in a work session?
I think we need some, yeah, to, to obtain guidance and then discuss, discuss that at a follow-on either work session or at our next regular meeting as an additional discussion item. I know certainly we need to discuss the vacancy. It's quite late-breaking, right? Effective as of today. So it's prudent to adhere to the 15 days. But I think as far as coming up with our plan of action for filling it, I would recommend we gather, Dr. Benson, as earlier discussed, right, can seek counsel for the 15 days. We can get additional information from the registrar and others as we see fit, and come back at perhaps our next regular meeting and discuss how we would like to.
I think we need to set a special session to move it forward. I don't think we should set it out that far because then you're burning days. So then you have interviews with people. So you'll be burning more days, and not everybody will be available at different times. So I think we should move as quickly as possible.
Okay, fair enough. So, yep.
Not on Wednesday nights.
Also, our calendar, our next meeting is the 23rd. So between then and now, so the next, where's that? Just pulled up.
I guess we need to give also a little bit of time to respond. So maybe if we just say next Monday, 16th, is it 16th? Yeah, next Monday, 16th.
Does that work?
Special meeting.
Find out, Dr. Benson, if you could, through that person, if the board agrees, what the 45 days are and what the 15 days are. Are they, are they business days or are they calendar days?
That's a good point.
Aye.
And in the meantime, we will plan a meeting next Monday on the 16th.
So would that be a special meeting or a work session? Or special meeting?
Special meeting for the topic of that individually, right? We're not going to be doing any other topic.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
As far as the topics, if there's any need for personnel, could it be added to that with the board's permission? That's up to you. Just in case. I don't know of any right now, but sometimes.
It's had to be in closed sessions. That would be okay, right?
It's not going to be a closed session. It's going to be a special session.
We wouldn't have a closed session in a special meeting?
In that regards.
We have.
We have. We did last time.
In regards to the, yes, I'm sorry. I thought you meant the appointment.
He's asking if we could, if necessary, add a personnel closed session.
We have any personnel.
Agenda.
You'd have, you could have two special sessions, right?
Or if it's unanimous here, we could just add the one special session with both things on there.
One's closed, one's open.
Correct.
We do that in each?
Whatever you all want to do.
Any objections to that? Okay. Special meeting, not April. What is this? August 16th? Okay. 6:00 PM. All right. Okay. So next, we have our third discussion item. So a discussion of our health metrics and associated planning, I suppose, for our school year. Ms. Pansiera, since you added it to the agenda, would you like to begin the discussion?
Yeah, so, you know, the data is ever-changing, and I just think that we should discuss what we are going to utilize for recommendation of changes to our current policy, both our mask policy and our in-school learning policy. You know, I believe somebody had said, you know, we don't want to be kind of stuck at the last minutes trying to figure out what we're going to use. I know that VDH has taken down the matrix, the school matrix that they had on there. And I also know that the CDC and the VDH, you know, there's some information on there that's kind of contradicting one another. So I think if we came together maybe in a work session to come up with an avenue as to what data we are going to use and how we're going to scale that based on something similar to low, moderate, substantial, and high, and once we get to that high level of, you know, what our actions would be.
So I would, I would ask, and with respect to our discussion last week about masks, it seems clear that if masks were required in the schools, our likelihood of needing to return to some sort of virtual instruction, which we haven't even discussed, like a need to close the schools, our risk would be significantly reduced. So it seems to me, while it's certainly a prudent discussion, we could further the chances of not needing to execute such an option if we were to revisit the mask stance. My two cents.
Um, my two cents is that, I don't know, when people recite that code and talks about the show offer the in-person, I don't think that virtual can be an option for somebody, but.
Well, I think it's a, the show give the option.
We already did virtual. I don't think we're going to do virtual again. There's some kind of law that says we will, but I haven't seen that come across yet.
I think what I'm hearing from Ms. Pansiera is that this could be part of a discussion of any change, and going to universal masking or revoking the masking would be a change. So I think that would be part of the discussion of those metrics.
That's correct. Also, along with going to hybrid, or if virtual does become something that the governor or somebody has given us that direction that we can do, or whatever that next step is, what matrix are we going to use in order to, to utilize that next step?
In either direction.
In either direction. And then obviously, when we go back, and when we get there, then to get back to that point.
So my question along those lines, I guess, would be for Dr. Benson. So right to this point in time, we've planned an in-person reopening with Virtual Virginia as the remote option. And as we know, I think, right, we've heard that the registration timelines for Virtual Virginia have passed. So, Dr. Benson, if there were a reason for us to consider for the schools to be closed or to resume some remote instruction, do we even have a virtual instruction option at this point in time?
Well, let me back up for one, just, just one second. I do, I've read carefully that Senate Bill 1303 and the language in there in terms of if a local school division needs to turn to a virtual option, there, there seem to be three points made that are very clear in that it is just that, it is just, it is a temporary option that needs to be defined in terms of, as Ms. Pansiera points out, you know, when it's appropriate. That requires, and I've reached out to Allison Balanchons from our Rappahannock Area Health District, seeking her guidance, because the way the law is written, it seems to be a kind of a partner decision with VDH providing the, the data and the the inferring from that data to local school boards to make a decision that, as we had last year, it was a division-wide decision. It seems to me that it specifies that it's at-risk groups of students. In other words, any virtual option for, you know, assuming it would be a prolonged period of time, would need to be targeted towards a specific group of students. It could be an entire school building. However, again, once that, the transmission level comes back down to a level where VDH advises, then, then the building is to be reopened to in-person. In other words, the law is very much requiring in-person learning for the full, the 100 days or the 990 hours. And that exceptions to that are viewed just as that exceptions. They're not a pivot that are, that are elected or, you know, unilaterally decided upon by one board. It's really a move, but it's a move in conjunction with the input of our local VDH, is the way I read it. And I think I copied the board on correspondence I sent to Ms. Palms today, seeking her input. So I can certainly keep the board updated on, on her response when I receive that or any input as far as kind of a what-if scenario, if that helps. But that's as far as I've got. kind of a what-if scenario, if that helps. But that's as far as I've gotten in communication with RAHD.
So that, okay, so that would sound like at this point in time, the latitude is provided to to offer in-person instruction for periods of time for at-risk populations, not necessarily to provide a remote learning environment for the entire school division. Is that correct?
Yes, but when you say at-risk population, that is the students who are, the way I read it, that's not students who are, you know, at risk because of a precondition, pre-existing health condition, but those students who are identified as close contact perhaps, or, you know, perhaps a grade level is the way I interpret that, or a classroom, or, you know, a worst-case scenario than a building. The building is the largest aggregate number of students that's specified in the law, so I assume that's where the law is intended, to target the most specific group that you can, if needed, and pivot to, for the time being, until you can return some type of online if necessary.
So would that be for a period?
It's very different than the paradigm we were dealing with last year, that's all.
Okay, so would that be for a period of time of like, say, 14 days, which is the standard quarantine kind of time? So it'd be something along those lines? Which makes sense?
To me, I think it would be longer than a 14-day, if more generally transmission were higher. That's the way I'm thinking of it, because we could redistribute hotspots, devices, but of course, you know, I don't know how many days we would lose in the distribution type thing, but we can certainly plan or we're capable of distributing the equipment needed and transitioning that way. I just think that before we get to those logistics, I think more generally, we need to make sure we understand the difference between such a transition, should it need to occur, and I certainly hope it does not, but should it need to occur, the difference between that and the commitment that we made last year to virtual learning.
So I think, like I said on Thursday, I warned people that we're on a slippery slope when you start talking about that, and I see we're on a slippery slope. So I think, you know, everybody's reciting the law. It says that you shall have in-person, and I don't even think that, you know, that needs to be
So it's just each, each school board to offer in-person learning. You know?
Shall offer.
Shall offer. So it seems, to offer. So it seems to me fascinating, shall I say, that we're discussing the interpretation of law, and I believe just earlier, during this very meeting, we discussed that it would be inappropriate for school members to be interpreting the law, because that's not what we do, and yet last week, and we continue to interpret the Senate Bill 1303 that does state, as was reread by a member of our public this evening during public comment, that we shall offer in-person instruction and that we shall provide it in a manner in which adheres to the maximum extent practicable to any current applicable mitigation strategies, back to our mask thing. So I find it interesting that we can pick and choose when we can serve as legal experts interpreting the law, and I I find it illogical that we discuss the return to in-person instruction when we could minimize that by requiring masks, which would reduce the number of quarantines that are required in the first place.
Mr. Collins, may I get a word in, please?
Certainly, Ms. Hawk.
I think that is part of the larger discussion that we were starting on in the matrix that we need to let the public know about when we will make changes. Not what changes necessarily, but at what stage, and I think it certainly could go in either direction, but I think the larger discussion needs to be had in that, needs to be done in that work session, and that way we can bring, if we need legal counsel for that work session, that'd be appropriate. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I tend to agree, because I mean, we could get into it in depth here and have discussion of, you know, I I agree that we're not legal counsel here and it is an interpretation and, you know, a lot of people have their own interpretation of shalls and recommended and and risk mitigation and scaled down, and I mean, we can go on and on, but I think that's not the issue here. The issue is coming up with some definitive thresholds or marks of, you know, when we're going to make these decisions. Not necessarily exactly what the decisions are that we're going to make, but what is going to push us to reassess what we're currently doing and, you know, go from there.
My turn now?
Go ahead.
So I stand by, you know, my interpretation of the law. I have 40 years' experience interpreting the law. We, as a school board, are under many, many mandates by law of what we do, so if we can't interpret that, then we shouldn't be up here. It specifically says all the things that you need to do, and as an elected official, that's what we are commanded to do. So I still would stay away from a slippery slope of, you know, getting too far in a discussion. You've already done virtual once. If you had to go back to it, you know how to do it.
So are you in in regard to this work session for changes, either direction, are you in favor of it or not?
In favor of what?
Of the meeting, the work session.
Well, if it's about masks, I mean, it's already a decided issue. So if that's the question.
That's not where the conversation started. I brought up the mask point. The conversation is to have a work session to discuss metrics.
And I said, if the end result is about to discuss masks, that's already a decided issue.
So I don't think it's only to discuss masks. I think it could be, you know, discussing other risk mitigations that we have in place that we might want to, you know, just make sure that we're utilizing them, maybe we want to take more focus on them. You know, I'll just throw something out here, which may be a little bit, you know, ridiculous, but, you know, you know, maybe we want to make sure that the kids are washing their hands, you know, X-amounted times during a day, or be a little bit more definitive in that, because hand washing is one of the risk mitigations that is important. You know, maybe we need to make sure that, you know, I don't know, I just think that we need to be able to get to the point where if things start rising, as everybody is fearing that they are, within our community and our district, that, you know, we can say, okay, now is the time that we need to reassess what we're doing and put something else into place, come in with another risk mitigation or improve on a risk mitigation that we already have in place, whatever that may be.
I think that half of it is certainly to make sure that we are in compliance with the metrics that are coming out from the health department, and the other piece is to inform the public about what the process is.
I think you could help to have an open discussion, because I don't know about other board members, but I've spent a lot of time on the CDC website, and there's a lot in there that people, you know, you can't just say, we shall do this and this is what we're supposed to do. There's a lot of other things in there that they give recommendations and they give guidance on, you know, scaling down and doing other risk mitigations, the qualitative and the quantitative procedures that we can go by, and, you know, all of this is kind of guided in the CDC guidelines, that I think that we as a board, if we came together and looked at and understood a little bit more, that we could come up with something that's a little bit more definitive and let the public understand that, you know, I don't think that we're breaking the law. You know, if we are breaking the law and what we're doing, then there's a whole lot of other people out there, other jurisdictions that are doing it as well, and I think it it becomes understanding the definition and terminology that we're actually looking at.
I don't like that. I know a lot of other jurisdiction are doing the same as we're doing, but, you know, Johnny jumps off the cliff, you know?
I agree.
So we're making our own decisions based upon what what we know, what we, the public wants and so forth and so on. Not based on another.
That is actually in the CDC guidelines. It actually states that one of, you know, the risk mitigations is that the public is involved in that decision, so.
Ms. Hawk, did you have something you wanted to offer?
I think that the question that we're dealing with is about setting for the special meeting.
Yes, it is, to discuss.
To discuss all the things that are being discussed, and in we can set the agenda for that special meeting through the chair and through Dr. Benson.
Does it need to be a special meeting, or can we not add it as a, we could, if there's additional data or information that we need from Dr. Benson or others, we could request that, and could we not address it as a part of our next regular meeting as a discussion item? Do we really need a separate work session?
Can I just suggest, because the law states that to facilitate any implementation or change to enact that, it says the Department of Health shall maintain a guidance document for K-12 school reopening that contains metrics for determining whether transmission of COVID-19 within public school buildings is at a low, medium or high level. So perhaps this document that's referenced by law, maybe that would be a good agenda item or a place to start, is to make sure we all understand, when I say we all, you know, our local Rappahannock area health district and us understand that document that they're keeping up, that this law seems to predicate school boards in Virginia would need to use to make such decisions. So, you know, I don't know whether it's a special meeting or not, but that may be a good starting place is to make sure that we understand their document. They're going to be maintaining on our behalf to help guide any decision you might have to make in the future.
So what if we were to make an agenda item for our meeting on the 23rd to have reviewed, come prepared to discuss that guidance and what that means for us as a board?
I think that would.
The only assumption there is that they would have that document updated, ready to discuss for you, but I've reached out to her. I expect a response here soon. I can let you know
Okay.
when I get back.
Has there been any discussion, Dr. Benson, at the, like, your state superintendent meetings or anything with regards to any of this additional, like, you know, last year there was a lot of discussion about the metrics and, you know, the matrix that came out. Has there been, has there been any guidance or discussion put forth for this year?
Not in the same way that it was last year. So that's why I say upfront, it was a very different paradigm last year. And last year, just it was continual updates, you know, so at one point it was one aspect of the health data, another meeting, it was a more descriptive chart, I guess. So there was kind of an evolution of the data and how it was being forwarded or portrayed. This, I think, clearly states that our local health district and school boards, you know, all the school boards in their planning district will need to collaborate on these, on these metrics. And I think that's to bring consistency, it seems, across the state.
And I believe that was updated as of July 21st, is that document, the plan, because Ms. Fisher did reissue that.
There have been updates, you know, the CDC certainly has issued updates, you know, up to last week. This seems to be a document that's titled Guidance Document for K-12 School Reopening.
Yes, yes.
So that's what I'd like to make sure that we're.
And I believe that's on our, oh, I don't know, I don't know if it's on our website or whether it's on.
Not ours. It's not our homegrown document, but this is a VDH document that.
VDH document is what I'm talking about, and that may have been on the VDH site.
Okay.
Remember, in these deliberations, that we don't work for the state superintendent, we work for the members of the, yes, we work for the members of the community. So the state superintendent works for the governor. So his opinion would be very similar to the governor.
It might be.
So far.
Okay, so.
Do we need a motion? Do I need to request that we add this to the next meeting agenda, or are we going to have a special meeting?
I think we can add it to the next meeting agenda unless there are objections.
Is that okay, Mr. Collins?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so on for the 23rd. Okay.
At that, Madam Chair, is it, and this is really a question, is it, I guess, will it be conducive to advance the discussion to have legal opinions at that meeting also?
Would seem to me appropriate.
Legal opinions for what?
For setting the matrix that we are looking toward.
I don't think legal opinions set metrics. Legal opinions interpret law.
That's right.
So metrics are not law.
If anything, I mean, we could set those metrics, and then we could go to legal and ask them if they break any law or violate any law that may be out there currently. I don't know.
Discussion. I don't have a fixed opinion, I think.
I think there's a lot more that's going to be coming out in the next couple of weeks, and by the time we come to our next meeting, we'll be able to have an open discussion and really be able to get some information and feedback from each other.
Okay. Any further discussion? Are we wrapped up with that till the 23rd? All right, moving on to our information items. Do we have any committee reports, Mr. Collins?
No, I do not.
Ms. Hawk?
No, but I will have one hopefully next week, because the Justice Day Governor's School will be meeting virtually in the next week, and I don't know about Commonwealth. I haven't been in touch with Commonwealth.
Thanks for coming. See you.
Our Justice Day meeting is coming up shortly.
Okay. All right, Ms. Pansiera? All right, I do not have any either. So our superintendent's report, Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board and to our community. We've had a great first day of school. We were very happy to welcome. I've got the number for you, 4,374 students this morning into our school buildings, and I had a chance to go around to each of our school buildings. I'll be at the preschool is the only exception. I'll be there tomorrow morning. Do want to congratulate everybody, and I want to thank all the families for preparing the kiddos to come to school. We had a couple of things that we're following up with for tomorrow morning. Hopefully, we've been in conversation with BDOT, the Virginia Department of Transportation, about the stoplight at the corner of Route 3 and Dahlgren Road as far as the middle school traffic there. We understand that was heavy this morning, and that may be an understatement. I'm not doing it justice to those that sat in traffic, but we are working collaboratively with them to amend or to better facilitate traffic as best we can in that location. We had a few buses that were a little late this afternoon, and we are working to adjust routes as we do each year, so we appreciate everybody's patience in that respect, but I want to congratulate and thank everybody. Everybody pulled through, you know, we kind of had to shake a little of the rust off, you know, in some cases, but very proud of all the staff and was very pleased walking around buildings and seeing the kids and seeing everybody getting back into it and teachers collaborating. It's great stuff. And so my hat's off to everybody, including families for preparing and receiving students back home from school. Secondly, I do have an obligation that I fulfill each year, and that is to notify our public that the Board Policy Manual, current copy of that is available certainly online at our website, and you may also access all of the board policies at any of our school locations or the Smoot Library. So that's a requirement I need to fulfill each year, and I do so happily. That is it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. All right, not for board comment. Mr. Collins?
So if I change seats, I I have to start down here. So welcome back, everyone, to school. I saw lots of folks stuck in that traffic, but they were excited to get back to school. The, on my way to this meeting, Bus 13 was broken down and I stopped. The bus driver was professional, courteous, helping those kids. There were 19 elementary kids on board. A neighbor got water for the children, and one little girl hugged me. They had another, I was bus there before I left, loaded the children and be on their way. But I just want to make, commend the driver of Bus 13 for the excellent job and keeping the patience and getting everything squared away. He was very, very professional, so I extend my thank you to him. Also, as we discussed earlier in our discussion about the Jameson Road District, James Madison District vacancy, Ms. Kristen Tolliver. Ms. Tolliver has served for 10 years. I'd like to thank her for her service. I've only been here eight of those 10 years, and I'd just like to thank her for her service. for her service. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Collins. Ms. Hawk?
Yes, and Mr. Collins, I'm glad you started that comment discussion about Ms. Tolliver, and, and I want to thank her for her, her years of service. She's, she has, she's delivered many services to this county. She's been involved with PTA from the time that Hunter was very small, and Hunter is, is all grown up now and paying taxes. I hope that Ms. Tolliver can go out feeling that she has given all that she can possibly give, and that it is perhaps time to recognize self-care. And I congratulate her on, on successful years. The other thank you that I would like to make also is to bus drivers. I, I too was at some of the schools, not all of them, and I didn't make it to the preschool, because I knew they were gonna be really busy. But I, I think the, the drivers and our custodians, our, our staff, who are there before, during, and after the students, just do an exceptional job. They are always available, not only to attend to their job, the, the maintenance of the schools and, and the maintenance of the buses and, and the delivery of the children, but they're there for the children. And again, I, I think every one of our custodians is also a counselor at, at their heart and level. I know when I was watching Mr. Golden today, that he was, he was greeting and so pleased to see, and kids were so pleased to see him. And that's true with all of our folks at the schools. I wanted to welcome our new staff, because we have a fair number of new people, and they were pitching in at each of the locations. And I, I think that we have a group of employees of, of which we can be very proud. I, I would like to ask Dr. Benson that before the next meeting, and this will be part of the discussion anyway, I think, that we could find out how the opt-out forms are, are they coming back, and how many numbers do we have at that point in time? And, and maybe if we could get that information by the end, I guess the, the end of this week is when they really do. So perhaps by Monday, we could have a little more specific data on that. All right? And as I said, the Commonwealth, the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School will be meeting next week, and I'm on the advisory council, so I will try to get back to you with information about that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Pansera?
I'd like to also just thank Mrs. Tolliver for her service. I know that she's put a lot of heart and soul in, into what she's done here, and she's made great strides, and I just wish her the luck moving on, and, and hope that she can take a little bit of time for herself now. And for all those that came out tonight, and who, who spoke out, I just want to thank you for voicing your opinion. This is a really touchy subject, and it's kind of hard for me, because I know I, I can hear the people that really want to have masks as a mandate. I can, as the young Mrs. Wright spoke tonight, you know, they're very compassionate. And, you know, I just want to remind everybody, if we could please be respectful in our comments, I think tonight we were, but we do get some rather, really, I think, inappropriate emails. And I just want to, you know, ask that, you know, we're all in this together, and I think that if we can all come together as a community and do what we feel is right to not only protect ourselves, but to protect the loved ones around us, that, you know, we're gonna be able to see that, you know, maintaining masks is optional, which I do believe is what a majority of the community is, is wanting, then I think we can come together as a community and, and really fight this pandemic. I also, like I said earlier, I, I've spent a lot of time in the CDC guidelines, and I just asked that everybody might take a little bit more time and go through it, because there's a lot of things in there that gives us the right to choose risk mitigation strategies as they're just recommendations. And it's also clear that a lot of these risk mitigations may be scaled down, and there are several sections referring to related quantitative and quantitative indicators that I think are a good tool that allows everybody to have a better understanding of what the CDC intent is to some of these risk mitigated strategies that we seem to focus on a little bit more, such as masks, social distancing, hand washing, and so forth. But it goes farther, much deeper into that, and I think that there might be a little bit of solitude for those that are a little bit more compassionate and wanting to have the mask mandate. And, you know, I, I just want to make it clear that it's, it's, I think that it's clear that the data is, supports heavily on both sides, so that makes our decision even more difficult. And that is one of the, the main reasons why I think that it's important that we have the option as each parents and staff to make that decision as to whether or not we feel that the masks, you know, play an important, important part in that risk mitigation. So I guess that's all I have to say. Kind of had some other things to say, but I've lost track, so that's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pansera. So I, I did have to say, I found it fitting that this evening we just, we, we were, found ourselves reviewing policy BBA, which is School Board Powers and Duties, in which it states that one of our duties is to ensure that the conduct of our schools is done in accordance with the law. We had a lot of discussion this evening about coming up with plans and then seeking counsel to ensure that we're in compliance with the law. And when we talk about slippery slopes, I think that's a big slippery slope. I think it's more prudent to adhere to state law or do the, to the maximum extent practical, do the best of our ability, than to make decisions that are questionable and then determine if they're legal. And since we've done away with distancing in our classrooms, primarily because of the number of students that are back in their buildings, and now masks, I don't really feel that we're even attempting to adhere to CDC recommended mitigation strategies, let alone to the maximum extent practicable. So I would just point out, I just want to be transparent that I have reached out to our county attorney and Commonwealth attorney in hopes of gaining clarity with regards to our interpretation of, of Bill 1303. And I've done so because I'm concerned, and I believe that it's the right thing to do. And then just lastly, as a parent, I can say that my kindergartner and my second grader came home with nothing but positive reports their first day of school. So I would like to extend a sincere thank you to all the staff that helped make that possible today. All right?
So, Madam Chair, you reached out to the Commonwealth attorney and the county attorney in regards to this. What did they say?
Well, I have not heard back from them yet. I called, they were not in their office, so I sent them some emails. So I will let everyone know.
Okay. Good. I would request that if you reach out to legal counsel in any form in the future, that you would notify the rest of the members of the board, so we know what's going on.
Certainly. Okay, do we have a motion to move into closed session?
Pursuant to State Code Select Section 2.2-3711.8.1, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, and substitutes of employees of the school board, and for discussion of specific employees of the school board, specifically the evaluation of the division superintendent, I move that we go into closed meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes, yes.
Oh, I don't think you read the right one.
Did you not read the revised one, Gail?
Yeah. So, and for discussion of specific employees in school board, specifically the evaluation of the division superintendent, and pursuant to State Code 2.2-3711A7, for the purpose of briefing by staff pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigation posture of the public body.
Oh, she read it.
I read it.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code 2.2-3712.D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second is certify.
Certify.
Certify. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair of it's aye. We're now in open session. So I have a motion to approve the action resulting from closed meeting.
Make a motion to approve personnel as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair of it's aye. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We can adjourn until September 16th.
16th.
September.
August 16th.
August 16th.
You can do September 23rd if you want.
Okay. Okay. Again. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Chair of it's aye. We are now adjourned until August 16th.